This meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education will come to order.
I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to order for this particular meeting on January twenty-eighth workshop, a joint workshop between the county commissioners and the county school board. I would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second?
All in favor of the motion, six to five.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll turn this over to Ms. Pam for the presentation of the damage sustained during Hurricane Florence.
First, let me say that we really are appreciative of having this meeting and be honored to let us come to this beautiful facility to have it. We had a workshop last week and of course these were some of the items that we discussed. The items that are on your agenda. I think that our staff has done due diligence in looking at all of the needs that we had following the hurricane and have reassessed those and done what we should have. So, we're really looking forward to you hearing some of the good things that we have to share with you. I know the Daily News did a wonderful article on our meeting and with the data that they received and some of this that we'll present today will reiterate those same comments. So apologize, a little bit, I apologize because of having some redundancy there. I know that we have our presentation ready and so we'll begin and I look forward to the dialogue and I'm sure my board does as well. Steve or you or Jeff, which?
I'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Roy, chairman.
The commissioners, last Wednesday we had a board meeting, our board workshop, and in that process we went through the Hurricane Florence update. Several things that we did discuss were about the Hurricane Florence damage and our estimated cost to fix the damage as well. So, just in case you're not aware of it, back in November fifth is when we opened up all the schools. We opened them up in a three-phase approach with the last set of schools opened up on November fifth. That meant that approximately thirty-eight days of school was missed during that time. The reason why the schools were, it was taking us so long to open up the schools was because we had significant damage at the schools. And we also had to dry out and also we had to take a look at some mold mitigation as well. All schools had some damage to them. As a matter of fact, thirty-six of the thirty-eight schools had roof damage to a great extent. I mean, some were smaller damage, bonded damage, but several of them had quite a bit of damage, including full replacement of roofs. I've passed, we're passing some sheets around to you and stuff and what this is and what you see on this slide right here is our estimated damages that we have to this date, okay? I want to make sure I reiterate that it's to this date. One of the things we've done is we've worked with the insurance adjusters, we've gotten with some facility planners and architects, engineers to take a look. This Smith Senate is one company that we work quite a bit with to do this as well. And we've come up with some numbers. And when you look at your sheet, what you'll see is on the left-hand side, it identifies the school and the location for all, I mean, for all the sites that were impacted. Okay, the next set of columns is for the roofing. We separate out the cost by roofing and by what the roof costs were and by what the internal damage or the damage that was done outside of the roofing. And so with the roofing, you can see the number of squares that were damaged and also the cost to repair, estimated cost to repair. These costs are based on insurance adjustment numbers and also based on some engineering costs that we recognized through Smith Senate for some of our roof systems that are composite engineered roof systems that take a little bit more work, i.e. the loadmaster systems. The other thing we have is the campus, okay? This is the cost to repair based on the insurance adjustment numbers. And over on the right-hand side, you'll see a quick summary of the damage that was done in each school that we're working on trying to get repaired. These aren't our numbers. These are basically what came from the insurance company and also from Smith Senate when they went back and looked at some of the engineering requirements for some of these areas. One thing I would like to take note on when we mention these numbers, these numbers are still a work in process as well. And the reason why I say that is because we have seen situations where the insurance company has come in and then did an adjustment assessment for that campus and that facility. And after we went back and looked at it, we realized there was some additional work that wasn't identified that needed to be done. And so we've asked them to come back in again and reassess. And in that process, we've seen corrections on some of our assessments where the cost actually increases from what we currently have. A good example of that would be White Oak High School. When they first went through and looked at our cafeteria being down and several of the classrooms being down, it was approximately two-hundred thousand dollars' worth of damage. Well, once they went back through and we reassessed, it exceeds a million dollars' worth of damage once they identified all the components that had to be replaced and fixed. Some of the projects that we have working on right now, okay, are the White Oak High School, Jackson Commons Middle School, and Clyde Owen Elementary School roofing. We also have several gym floors that are damaged and we have two cafeterias that are down right now, White Oak High School and Dixon Elementary School. We also had twenty-six mobiles damaged, twelve of them already been repaired and we have occupancy in them, sixteen are still being repaired. And also county school staff is doing the repair on those. This picture right here that you see in this presentation, that's a picture of White Oak High School cafeteria. I think many of the board members and many of the county commissioners have walked through White Oak High School cafeteria and saw what it looked like before. This is what our school staff did to help bring this up to speed. One thing you will note though is if you look at, you can't see it in the picture very well, is when you're looking at the roof, I mean, at the flooring, the flooring still has to be replaced. What we did is we sealed it up and we put a coat of wax on it right now, but because there's some damage, we had to patch it. And then in the summertime, we're going to go ahead and take and replace the floor completely. Underneath this VCT flooring right there is some asbestos tile that was contained and sealed up right now, but we do need to replace that in the summer months. So even though we say White Oak High School cafeteria is being used, it's not fully complete. We have several situations like that as well. Overall, we have approximately, we have approximately twenty-two classrooms that still aren't being used. Ten of them being at the White Oak High School science wing, six of them being over at Northwoods Park Middle School, and then we have several others in different locations, just one or two in different locations. But we have twenty-two classrooms that are still not being used. Another area that's a big concern for us is the Dixon Elementary School. The cafeteria is still not being used. That's one of our core areas that we're working hard trying to get this thing fixed as quickly as possible. That means that we've got contractors out there right now. We also have Onslow County school staff working at the Dixon Elementary cafeteria trying to get this ready and hopefully we'll have that ready within the next two to three weeks. Some of the funds that we're looking at to pay for this and normally what we want to do is we always want to use NCDPI insurance first. That's our primary funding source for these projects. We're working with them very closely, trying to work out some of the details, make sure that we have the correct scope of what needs to be repaired and what they're going to fund. And if there's some damage that they say they're not going to fund for whatever reason, for example, they're saying, well, this roof had patches on it so we're not going to cover it because that wasn't considered, that was considered wind-driven rain instead of hurricanes or a storm-related issue, well, at that point in time, we've got to work with them and we try to find out what the scope of insurance is going to cover. Once that's done, we have a good identification of how much the insurance is going to pay for, our next step in our funding sources is through FEMA. We've been working very closely with FEMA for the last three months and we've been having weekly meetings with them. We have all our damages identified, entered into the systems, and once we have clarification from DPI insurance, that's when we can actually start looking at requesting funds from FEMA as well. And the last thing that we're looking at is state funds. State funds would cover areas where FEMA and DPI insurance may not cover. All that being said, I know earlier October first, if you can imagine this, October first, we still didn't have roofs on the buildings, okay? It was still raining. We still didn't have, I mean, we were just getting power back on and everything. And then a quick situation came up saying, well, how much is it going to cost to fix this? Well, at that point in time, it was hard to tell exactly what the exact cost was going to be because we didn't have a good assessment of it yet. And in that process, you have to realize, it was still raining in the buildings, I mean, literally raining in the buildings, and we're trying to dry out the buildings while it's raining, which kind of defeated its purpose. So at that point in time, we said, talking with our consultants and our contractors, having a discussion with them, we said this could be up to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars' worth of damage. Since that time, now that we've dried out and we've had a better chance to do the assessments and looking at them, what we're looking at now is a cost between forty million and fifty-point-five million dollars to fix the schools. Of that, the drying out and mold remediation was going to be about eighteen-point-five million. Roofing and campus structures would be approximately anywhere from nineteen to thirty million. And that, the reason why that range is out there for that is because, as I mentioned before, when we're going back and doing, after we get the insurance adjustments and numbers that we're looking at, we recognize that there were things that were missed that had to be included in this process. So we left that range open enough so, just in case there's other things that weren't identified that could be included in that process, in that cost. Contents were four-hundred thousand, technology approximately seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, food stuffs, we lost about two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars' worth of food in this process, professional services five-hundred thousand, business losses eighty thousand. So the total estimated cost range, this is the estimated range, is between forty million and fifty-point-five million dollars. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer to the best of my ability.
Steve, the eighteen million dollars for the drying out and the mold remediation, is that backed out of the fifty million figure?
No, that's included in the fifty million figure. This is all inclusive. As mentioned right now, we're looking at our main funding sources would be insurance, would be our primary funding source, and we're looking at FEMA and also the state to help us provide additional funding for it.
What is the funding that the school has received so far? I know the school had, according to Dr. Stout, twelve million dollars in fund balance. I guess that's Jeff's.
I'd like to address that for you, if you'd like. There's a handout going around right now that shows the awards that we've received so far and also the expenditures and encumbrances that we have at this point. Again, as Steve mentioned, our primary funding, first line of defense is through NCDPI insurance. That's that second bracket of numbers that you see there. That came out in two separate advance payments. We initially got one-point-five million and then another just over seven-point-three million, a total of about over eight-point-eight million in DPI insurance at this point. We should be receiving an additional advance. We had people from DPI insurance come down and had a good meeting with them about a week and so ago, and they indicated that we would be getting a third advance at that time, and they were hoping about three million dollars. We've not seen that yet, but do anticipate that in the next couple of weeks. In addition to that, we've also received funds from the state grant. This has come out in two awards so far. The first award was over ten-point-five million and the second award was four million dollars. They've announced that there will be a third award, but we are unsure about the timing or the amounts on that. I know they're gathering information at least through the end of this month and perhaps beyond before they start making any determinations on that. So, so far, we've had revenues of over twenty-three-point-four million dollars between DPI insurance and state grants. However, the expenditures and encumbrances that we've had to make so far are almost twenty-eight-point-four million dollars. So, we've had to cover an additional about five million dollars beyond what we have received. Of course, during this process early on, before we were able to obtain any money from DPI insurance or the state grant, we were in the process of doing the drying out in the schools and had to continue that. So we went ahead and appropriated our entire undersigned fund balance of about six-point-eight, six-point-nine million dollars at that time. And we utilized that to pay initial bills. Some of these are reimbursements that we have received since that time. So that leaves us at this point, a little less than two million dollars that we're working with to award roofing contracts and other projects that need to go forward. As Stephen pointed out, we're probably going to be in the forty to fifty million dollar range with all this. So it's going to be important on the timing as we continue to receive insurance proceeds to be able to apply those to the upcoming projects as we move forward.
Mr. Myers, since everything was in such a state of flux and the temporary roofs weren't on yet, why was there a need to come out with the second estimate of a hundred and twenty-five million since it was a changing situation is what you seem to be saying?
At that time, there was a lot of state entities that were looking at, wanted to have some information provided to them as quickly as possible so they could get the resources to as fast as possible as well. When they were asking for the information, we were giving our best effort, guess, but as we, I mean, not guess, but I mean estimate, but as we said, that was going to be up to a hundred and twenty-five million. We weren't sure exactly how much damage it was going to take, how much internal structure damage there was in this whole process without actually having a chance to dry out and go in and take a look at it. So on October first-
So it wasn't a systematic approach? It was just a guess, a best guess?
It was a systematic approach based on the information we had at that point in time. What we did was we had assessments going through, but please remember, we had limited staff at the time. We had resources available to help us dry out and look at all the different schools. And in that process, we're going, okay, well, do we need to replace this insulation here? Do we need to replace this drywall here? Do we need to do this, do that? And worst-case scenario, we, at that point in time, it was, we knew that we had to give the state a number to look at and we knew that we would rather be up to a hundred and twenty-five million instead of saying, well, we think it's going to be thirty million dollars and be short. So, in that process, we sat down with the vendors and contractors and also with our staff and made the best determination possible at that point in time.
I have a question on that. Again, these figures are a lot more digestible in terms of forty to fifty-five or fifty-point-five million that you were talking about.
Yes, sir.
I guess the concern I had was the nature of how it went about because it caused some very concerning issues at the particular time because quite frankly, as a commissioner, I felt that we were being pressured, that we had a hundred and twenty-five million dollars out there, way more than what we estimated, way more than we anticipated, I should say. And that caused us to raise our eyebrows and ask a lot of questions. And then I see where we went from a hundred and twenty-five million dollars back down to forty to fifty-point-five million dollars, which is more digestible, more to deal with. But it seems that back then, the atmosphere of that meeting, I still remember that emergency session, the atmosphere of that meeting was to get us to sign something, to get into an agreement right away. And I understand where you guys are coming from in terms of, you really didn't have all the information before you. But I think we could have waited, you know, beyond that, to see where we were at, make a better assessment. And I guess that's the problem, that's the issue that I had personally with the whole process in the past. Because we went from an estimated thirty-five million dollars, I think it was more, to about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars within a span of four days. And that was very, very concerning to me. But now with the recent, I guess you had a chance to go out and do a proper estimate, to get the proper pricing or whatever it might be, and now we brought it back down to forty, forty to fifty-point-five million dollars, correct?
Yes, sir. Right now, these are the numbers that we're looking at between forty and fifty million dollars for that process. Now, as I mentioned though, these numbers are still, I mean, they're within a range and the reason why is because we do notice that, we do recognize the fact that some of the insurance adjustment numbers aren't correct. And so we're going back in and trying to make sure we get the scope taken care of correctly so we can go forward with the projects. Also, these are estimated prices that we're looking at too. When we go out to bid, we'll go out to bid using board policy and state regulation, I mean, as far as going out to bid for things. And we want to make sure that we go out to bid that also meets FEMA guidelines. So we're going out and we're, so whatever we go out to bid on, the prices that we come back is the prices that there will be. It could be lower than what the insurance adjusters pricing is, or it could be higher, okay? We don't know for sure. And that's why we started putting estimated ranges in here. But we want to make sure we're going out to bid, get the best prices possible to meet the needs of the school system.
Who's awarded the contract now? I mean, who is, what company is working this with you guys in terms of the reconstruction and restoration?
Well, these are all individual contracts. We have several contracts going out right now. We have contracts going out for gym floors, playground equipment, security cameras, roofing. I mean, we have different contracts going out for everything. We don't have one contractor that goes out and does the whole thing.
I understand that. I guess what I'm asking is, I guess when we initially had our meeting and we were given a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, that estimate was based on one company that was providing those estimates at that time?
It was provided by one company and Onslow County school staff looking at it and making the best determination that we could at that point in time.
And just to clarify, that was the estimate for both the drying out process as well as estimate for long-term repairs. But all along, even from the beginning, the plan was to just do the dry out and then go through the bid process for all the long-term repairs. And that would be utilizing, you know, multiple companies. So, so far, primarily the stuff that we've done has been mostly related to the dry out process, but they have started with some of the roofing bids and those type of things at this point.
Well, like I said, I feel much better with the current estimates that we have now. We have a more realistic number out there. And I guess what was concerning to me back then, because we had an estimate of a hundred and twenty-five million dollars and we have to answer to the taxpayers because they're going to have to pay for it. And it'd been really hard to justify a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. A lot easier to justify this lower amount, which is more realistic. So, that's my point that I was trying to make.
We're very happy that the numbers are coming in a lot lower, but all along, it was never the intention to, you know, ask for the county taxpayers to pay all that. Again, insurance is our first line of defense, and then FEMA, and then any state grant money that we can get. At the time we'd met before, it was really about trying to continue the drying out process so that we could get to the point that we could begin building the long-term projects. And so, at that time, we did not know precisely how much it was going to take to get to that. We just knew that we were getting to the end of the funding that was available to us to continue that without having to pull them off the job and kind of let things wait.
I just have one last question. So if I understand this right, with the contract that you guys are proceeding for, obviously with the repairs and the restoration, which I commend you for, one of the individuals that gave the original estimates back in the fall of last year came to our BOC meeting to plead his case. So I guess what I'm trying to determine is, is his company part of this restoration or is he part of this process at all?
No, no.
He's not been contracted with us, or you guys, I should say?
He was contracted for the drying out and the mold remediation part of the contract. And that, and we also had one other company that did some drying out and mold remediation for another school too. So we had two contractors doing mold remediation, drying out for us. But the rest of the work is done through going out the bidding process. Remember, when we were drying out and doing this mold remediation, it was an exigent circumstance where we had to get something done quickly. Once that exigent circumstance was addressed, then we go out, go through our normal bidding processes and going through the contracts and making sure we do things according to board policy, state mandates, and also FEMA guidelines, federal guidelines as well.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Have you received any indication from the state or from DPI about what kind of revenue you can expect in the future?
The amounts and the type of funding we were going to get from DPI insurance has fluctuated over this period of time.
So far, primarily, the stuff that we've done has been mostly related to the dry out process, but they have started with some of the roofing bids and those type of things at this point.
Well, like I said, I feel much better with the current estimates that we have now. We have a more realistic number out there. And I guess what was concerning to me back then, because we had an estimate of a hundred and twenty-five million dollars and we have to answer to the taxpayers because they're going to have to pay for it. And it'd been really hard to justify a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, a lot easier to justify this lower amount, which is more realistic. So that's my point that I was trying to make.
We're very happy that the numbers are coming in a lot lower, but all along, it was never the intention to, you know, ask for the county taxpayers to pay all that. Again, insurance is our first line of defense, and then FEMA, and then any state grant money that we can get. At the time we'd met before, it was really about trying to continue the drying out process so that we could get to the point that we could begin building the long-term projects. And so at that time, we did not know precisely how much it was going to take to get to that. We just knew that we were getting to the end of the funding that was available to us to continue that without having to pull them off the job and kind of let things wait.
I just have one last question. So if I understand this right, with the contract that you guys are proceeding for, obviously, with the repairs and the restoration, which I commend you for, one of the individuals that gave the original estimates back in the fall of last year came to our BOC meeting to plead his case. So I guess what I'm trying to determine is, is his company part of this restoration or is he part of this process at all?
No.
He's not been contracted with us, or you guys, I should say?
He was contracted for the drying out and the mold remediation part of the contract. And that, and we also had one other company that did some drying out and mold remediation for another school too. So we had two contractors doing mold remediation, drying out for us. But the rest of the work is done through going out the bidding process. Remember, when we were drying out and doing this mold remediation, it was an exigent circumstance where we had to get something done quickly. Once that exigent circumstance was addressed, then we go out, go through our normal bidding processes and going through the contracts and making sure we do things according to board policy, state mandates, and also FEMA guidelines, federal guidelines as well.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Have you received any indication from the state or from DPI about what kind of revenue you can expect in the future?
The amounts and the type of funding we were going to get from DPI Insurance has fluctuated over this period of time. At the very beginning, we got assurances that, oh yeah, we're going to take care of that, y'all go ahead, get at it, get the thing dried out as quick as you can to prevent additional costs and additional damage and additional time out of school, go for it, we got you covered, only to, you know, within a week or so later, getting a totally different story about, oh, this part's not going to be covered and that type of thing. And then moving into more of a uncertain and flip-flop kind of answer. And that's part of what caused a lot of the concern here, so we didn't know exactly what we could count on. We did have representatives come down the other week and meet with us, and after that conversation, feel very much more comfortable with the process and what they're covering. It does appear, although there were items that were left off of their original assessments when they did their adjusting visits, that after Mr. Myers and his staff and consultants that we're using have pointed these out to them, that they are quickly reassess, well, I won't say quickly, they are reassessing the situation and recognizing that they left out things. So it appears that that's heading in the right direction, that we're going to get a fair adjustment at this point, is how that appears. The one area that still seems to be in the most flux is the drying out process, as to what portion of that they're going to commit to covering. I think this is kind of new territory to them, and they're trying to determine what portion is their responsibility per the insurance contract. And so they may be applying a percentage of roofline that's damaged to the percentage of cost of that project. We're still not sure about that, so that's kind of our biggest question. I think the other parts will be a lot more kind of cut and dry moving forward. But keep in mind, we have been working with FEMA along the way, and so they're our second line of defense, but they're not going to make a payment on the drying out contract until DPI Insurance has stated what their determination to claim is and what, if any, portion they're going to deny. At that point, it can kick over to...
I talked to a lot of citizens who have that, who are getting that ambiguity from their insurance companies, so I understand where you're coming from.
Well, Jeff, what concerns me and the board was back when we had our emergency meeting with the school board and the commissioners to talk about the damage and see what could be worked out with the commissioners to help out. The original figure that the drying out and mold remediation, that number was fifty million. And the statement there was, if we don't get some money to pay them, they're going to walk off the job. That was a statement in that meeting for the fifty million. And then we appropriated a certain amount of money that hadn't been used yet, but then when the county attorney asked for the copy of the contract, that fifty million had dropped to, not to exceed twenty-seven million. And now we see that that work was, or that particular remediation was eighteen million point five hundred sixteen thousand. So I hope those numbers changing like that don't get FEMA nervous about doing remediation and paying out because they look at everything, you know?
And we're happy for them to. In fact, the things they've reviewed on that already, you know, have passed muster and they're good with what's been turned in. Keep in mind, looking at that figure, the fifty million dollar range figure was kind of a total for getting back in to school and getting schools started up. So it included the drying out process, but it also included, we thought we were going to have extensive furniture replacement that was needed and things like that. So there were some other items in there as well. And it turned out, a lot of that damaged because we were able to get in there so quickly and get things dried out. We didn't have as many damages and things that need to be replaced as originally, you know, we feared and had been given advice from consultants as might happen. I think some other districts have seen more of that because they did not jump on things as quickly in the beginning, and they had a lot more mold damage and things like that that they had to deal with. That, and then on the dry out part, I think that portion did come down considerably. But again, you know, this is a vast project and we're happy to see numbers going down and not up.
And Mr. Holloman, if you don't mind, one of the things too, as far as the dry out is concerned, please understand too that we were able to use some of our own staff to help with the dry out process as well. And we also had the Marines, Marine Corps came in and helped us out too. They provided several hundred people to help us with the drying out process too. So we were trying to utilize all resources we could to reduce the cost going forward and get this done as quickly as possible.
Has the board prioritized these projects, or is that something the architect will help you do? Is he, he gives you advice on...
As far as the prioritization of the projects are concerned, when we talked to the board earlier and stuff, one of the things we are doing is we're prioritizing, we want to drive the roofs, drive, keep the buildings dry first, so roofing is the first priority, and we need to work on that. After that, we want to get the classroom and instructional spaces back into operation, which would be the twenty-two classrooms that we have and plus the sixteen mobile classrooms. And then we'll look at the gym floors, and then we'll go from there once we do that. So that's the priority that we're looking at right now. So we're looking at the roofs, and when we do the roofs, we're looking at, we go out and contract for the roofs. We're going out for three or four campuses at a time. And the reason why we do that, we may have one campus that only has maybe five squares of roofing that needs to be fixed, and we may have another campus that has several hundred squares of roofing that needs to be fixed. Well, if we just go out to contract for a five-square roof, a lot of the contractors don't want to go out there and fix that roof, I mean, spend that time and effort for that. But if we group and package these together, then what we can do is we can get an economy of scale. And so, you know, when you bid on this, you bid on this roof, this roof, and this roof, and so you got, we're going to get all the roofs together at the same time and try to get a cheaper price for it. So that's what we're working on right now, so.
Do you have one contractor for the roofs now, for all of them, or...
No, sir. We have several. We usually, and I don't have all the list of names in front of me right now and stuff.
I do agree about, I mean, I do agree about the concept of a roofer not wanting to fix just a small shingle or two.
As far as our bidding process is concerned, we go out to bid, we try to make sure we have at least three qualified contractors bid on a project, and then we go from there. Most of the time, we have four or five. Sometimes we have less, but if we do that, then we go out to rebid, we go out and renegotiate, I mean, go out to bid again and see if we can get some more people in there. But we try to get at least three people, three contractors bid on each individual package that we do.
Steve, just for clarification, you were saying for priority list, classrooms, of course, are first, but you didn't mention the core facilities other than when you mentioned Dixon Middle.
Yeah, I apologize. The core facilities, and that is one that we're working on right now. The other core, one core facility that we're working on right now, it is one of the top priorities, is getting that cafeteria running back in Dixon Elementary School. We need, we want to feed the kids in their own school.
What about the media center at Northwoods Middle?
Media Center at Northwoods Middle has, is being worked on. They do have some flooring in there that has to be worked on, some ceiling tile, but we should be able to get that going pretty quickly too.
Thank you.
I know the schools are, some of them are still, some classrooms not being able to be used, but basically, are the schools, once we hopefully get the roofs done first to protect the infrastructure, are they, they're safe enough now to continue with schools until we can get the funding in place to...
Yes, sir. The areas of schools that I would be, I wouldn't want to put classrooms in yet are the ones that are still closed, and that would be over at the White Oak High School in the science wing, Northwoods Park Middle in the wing, right next to the cafeteria and the media center. Those areas, we have extensive work to do, some more installation and roof work and casework. And in the science, if you can imagine, science classrooms take a lot of additional work as well because we got to pipe in different plumbing, it's got to be put it back in there, and sometimes we have to put in some gas and stuff too. So there's quite a bit of stuff going on in there, and so we wouldn't want to put people, kids in those wings right now until that's completed. We would hope, and I hate to make, I would hate to make a strong commitment like this, but at the same time though, our hope and our goal is to get all those classrooms ready by August. Okay? So it's an aggressive schedule in some areas, but we want to do that. And we're looking at about twelve to eighteen months before we have everything completely finished.
Governor Cooper's been here several times and toured the damage, not only our schools, but other infrastructure too, and he has pretty much committed that he's going to make sure that we get the necessary funding to take care of the schools. Do we know what kind of timeline that'll be and what kind of timeline it will be for the application process for FEMA, for FEMA to step in? That's going to be a big help if they step in with their seventy-five percent?
With FEMA, like, as I mentioned before, we've been working with them for the last three months. We have weekly meetings with FEMA right now, and we generate projects, and we're going through the approval process on many of them. For example, that dry out project that we have, that we were talking, that Mr. Holloman was talking about, we've gone through that process. They've gone, it's gone through the majority of the approval already, and they're ready to award, but we need to wait till the insurance company to see how much they're going to pay on the dry out as well. Because we don't want, we don't want FEMA to award us with the understanding that the insurance company's going to take care of the majority of it, so all we get is a five-thousand-dollar deductible on an eighteen-million-dollar bill. I think we'd rather wait for the insurance community to say how much they're going to pay before we ask them to help us out.
I think what you're doing now is commendable. I think what you're doing is you're doing your due diligence because you just saved the county taxpayers, what, seventy to eighty million dollars based on the first assessment that we were all scrambling around trying to find money for? So that's good news in itself. And if we keep it that way...
Yes, sir. And as we mentioned too, the first assessment was always just up to, I mean, we knew it could be less, but at the same time, without actually being able to get the rain from pouring into the classrooms, it was hard, it was hard to make that final assessment in that process, but we knew that we had to give some number to the state at that point in time, and we, at that point in time, it was better that we gave them a worst-case scenario instead of being overly optimistic and telling them something that we didn't have, and all of a sudden, we find out we need more funds.
And that's great, but you know, when you bring those numbers up, it just, I'm just making a point that it puts a big burden on the board of commissioners, especially the county manager, to find that extra funding in a worst-case scenario, to make those payments to fund it properly and to find the right revenue stream. So again, like I said, it's commendable because now we're looking at seventy to eighty million dollars less that we don't have to worry about, and the citizens don't have to worry about. So I mean, if you keep going in the way you are, I think it'll work out.
Commissioner Knapp, I can tell you, when we saw these figures last week, it was good news to us as well.
Absolutely.
May I make one more comment too? I mean, in this process with our estimates and stuff, I know that it's dropped quite a bit. One of the things that I can't speak highly enough is our, the Onslow County Schools' maintenance staff has been doing a lot of the work in-house on their own. And so we've been, they've been out there, while we get an insurance adjustment number or while we get another number, they're actually going out and fixing roofs, they're going out and doing these small patches and stuff, doing the White Oak High School cafeteria. They're doing all these things to help save costs as well. So I got to give a shout out to them as well because they've done an excellent job in this process to help keep costs down.
What kind of dollar value do you put on that?
It's priceless.
I'll tell you, Mr. Myers, as well, as being someone that was sitting on the, I say it this way, but sitting on the sidelines when this was taking place, but in the middle of it as well, to see the first numbers, that's a sticker shock for anybody, but it sure did make, at this point now, seeing the new numbers come up there, make everybody take a sigh of relief of where it's at now because at that time, I think it was something none of us had ever been a part of. And when you start going around and looking at those sites and seeing what you're seeing and making those decimates, that's a tough number to come up with, and I know that was a tough number to present to commissioners. I was at that meeting and listening to that, and I was just, my whole perspective was on one certain building, and I could only imagine what that number was going to come back. So at this point, looking at these numbers, I think we all take a deep breath and a sigh that that number was big in the beginning, but it's been reduced dramatically now, and kids are back in the buildings and education is going on, and look forward to continue this process of good things coming out and positive things taking place.
Yes, sir.
And you know, one thing that comes to mind, when I think of Hurricane Florence, individuals and organizations face things that they've never faced before. I don't remember Onslow County government issuing a county-wide mandatory evacuation prior to this. Certainly, Mr. Myers and his staff had never walked into three-point-eight million heated square feet of school facility and watched it rain indoors. I'm sure that we would have loved really close, good numbers on day one or two, but these numbers certainly do look a lot better than the meeting that I watched on television and saw the report that was coming in from the school system. I think it's important to note though, that last week, we had a workshop, and during that workshop, the Board of Education also gave direction to staff through consensus, and that was that we can go ahead now and prepare for the 2019 hurricane season. We're going to go ahead and have some contracts hopefully put in place no later than our May 2019 meeting. That's going to be maybe per-unit costing. I know the county has long had a debris removal contract that's renewed regularly, so you had Crowder Gulf at your beck and call, you were able to bring them in. I think we can also do some things with the school system, whether it's roof repair or some dry out, prebid those, make them available in case of a disaster, and I know that we're working on that. So great, great to have good due diligence now and before the next one.
Thank you. Let's see, I think we'll move on now to the funding variables and options. Mr. Cotton, can you lead us in prayer with that?
Thanks. Chairman Bright, Chairman Thomas, Commissioners, Board of Education members. Been meeting with the school board staff, and as everyone knows, at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2019, the existing funding formula is set to expire. Now, the North Carolina General Assembly did adopt House Bill 1031, and right now, going into fiscal year 1920, Onslow County staff, we don't have any direction in terms of what a amenable funding formula would look like. And speaking on behalf of the county staff, and don't want to speak on behalf of Dr. Singletary, but if we could get some direction on what those variables would be that would be amenable to both boards, we could get together at the staff level and work up an agreement in draft, present it to both boards, and move forward. One thing to note is that House Bill 1031 does address current operating expense. However, it is, it's not completely silent on annual capital. It does stipulate that the local government commission and the school of government will form a working group, and by March 30th of this year, will come back with recommendations to the General Assembly as to what that would look like, everything from fund balance parameters and up to and including potentially a funding formula for annual capital. But as of right now, House Bill 1031 doesn't necessarily address the capital on point as specific as the operating expense. So that is, that is the ask or the request from staff is guidance on the direction that both boards would like to see your respective staffs take in developing a new funding formula.
Thank you, David. I just want, for the record, that the funding formula that was in place is still in place. That funding formula was abandoned by this board effective of June of this coming year, not, it wasn't effective the day that we voted on it, which... on it, which was in August. That funding formula is still in place and still in place and still June. But I had conversation with the chairman of Ms. Thomas and she agreed that we needed to, early on that we needed to revisit that formula to make it custom fit for what we needed here as a board and what the school board needed. And really, that meeting was scheduled for September 27th or 21st.
Something there.
We were, we were supposed to talk about this same thing in September. But the hurricane come along and that destroyed the meeting and everybody was in a recovery mode to try to get their home repaired. And then as time went on, we, that meeting was canceled. And as time went on, the Board of Education and the county commissioners had two new members coming on, Mr. Shanahan and Mr. Tim Foster. So I didn't feel like it was appropriate to have a set of, do a funding agreement with the school board without the two new members. And you had new members also, Mr. Lanier and Bob, you're up for reelection and Jeff, you're a new member. I didn't think it was appropriate to, to set anything right after the, you know, before these new members come on. So it ended up being today. And that's where we are today with trying to figure out what we're going to do with funding mechanism for funding the school. And it's good that we can do that because we need to know what we need to plan in our budget. And the school board, you guys need to know what to plan in your budget. And we need to both agree on them so we can move on with this. So that's where we're at right now. I'm hoping we can come to a reasonable resolution to fund the schools properly. And we, we've got two new schools that's slotted for construction. And we, last year, Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Buchanan and I voted to increase property tax by three cent in order to build those new schools. So I know that the schools, I know that Dixon Middle School is already overpopulated because you had to take people out of the elementary school and put them into Dixon Middle School. And that school we just cut the ribbon on year before last. And so we had, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't there 600 more additional students this year? I don't know if that number changed since the hurricane, but 600 additional students, that's another elementary school. That's, that's what kind of population we're growing with our students. So we have to try to keep up with the growth. And right now, the revenue is not keeping up with the growth. I can tell you that. We're just not able to keep up with it. So that's another reason we need to revisit the funding for schools for county appropriation. I think right now, the county, we are at a point on our tax base that I want to say 55% of our property tax, is it, do you know that?
Yes, sir. It's 52.
55% of our tax base that we collect for property taxes goes to education. And that's the highest in the state. Everybody else is around the 35 to 40% range. So what drives that figure, I don't know, other than the growth. We do have a lot of growth. And we have 38 schools to worry about that we have to maintain. So that's another big, big drop in the bucket. So I invited a governor's representative here today and I'm hoping she's going to take that information back. And he's going to bring a trainload of money down here to help us out. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you.
Jack, I think my recommendation would be for both staffs to work together. Seems like what David's looking for, for both staffs to work together, come up with some sort of a formula that can bring back to our boards so we can discuss it. I mean, what do you think Pam? For Jack, I think if you put the two boards working together, two staff boards, and then come up with some sort of solution for us to look at.
That's what I'm looking at.
I don't think we're going to be able to hash that out right now. There's no way we can do that.
Well, I think we might could hash that, but we may be here all night.
We probably would be.
Because I think there's a lot that, that we need to go back and rethink. But I agree with you. I think that our staffs can do that and come back and present to the boards. Bob, you have?
I do have some concerns with regards to that. I do believe that this should be a board-driven policy, not a staff-driven policy. But I think it would be helpful to the school board to have the county reiterate what the objections to the current funding formula, so that we've got a basis that we can go forward with.
Let me, let me just address that. My, my problem with the prior, with the current formula is, is based totally on the, the needs of the school system and has no reflection of our revenue as a county. I, I think that whatever new funding formula we come up with, it has to reflect the revenue that Onslow County has available to it as well as the needs of the school. So we can't, we can't just fund, well, we saw it. It's, it's not sustainable when you're growing by the, by the, by the numbers that you are and our revenue is not growing at the same rate. We have to have some kind of formula that reflects the revenue that we have available to send to the school system.
And the per student keeps changing every year. We went from like 1575, 1770, what are we, 1885 now per student? I believe that's where we're at. Davis or Sharon?
I think it's more Davis.
I think it's 1885. I believe it's 19 something.
1925.
1,928.
So it's growing. Commissioner Foster, I don't want to put you on the spot, but he's, he's new to the board and so is Commissioner Shanahan. And he, he come up with a fairly good idea, I think, that maybe a couple of the county commissioners work with staff and maybe more than a couple. But we can't have more than three because we could have four of them every time. But if somebody like Tim Foster and Commissioner Shanahan and maybe Commissioner Price or Commissioner Knapp, if you wanted to work with staff to help develop that with the school staff, I think that would put us in a better understanding of what the school board's faced with. And you can bring that back to the board.
Well, I read an interesting suggestion by Commissioner Shanahan. He wrote a lengthy email. I don't know if y'all, all the commissioners get that email. I mean, I read it a couple of times. Basically what you said in that email makes sense. I mean, it's viable and still, I think it would benefit. It would be more in terms of the goals that we're trying to achieve as far as whatever existing revenue that we have. I don't mean to put you on the spot Bill, but are you prepared to?
Yeah. So what, what I was looking at with this situation is the, how North Carolina has set up the funding of schools on the local level creates sort of an inherent tension between the two boards in that, like Commissioner Bennett was saying, schools obviously want funding to meet their needs. And we want funding levels that match our, our economic reality and what our tax base is, is doing. And so what do you do when the needs start outpacing what our, our revenue stream looks like? And of course, when we're dealing with budget areas that we have total control over, we have to make a tough decision between either raising revenue or, or cutting spending and trying to decide that maybe some of those needs aren't really needs after all. The, the problem with this situation is that we of course don't have that option when dealing with the school board. And we shouldn't have that option. You guys were elected by the people to run our school system. And so we don't get to go through the budget with our county manager and finance director and go line by line and, and make those decisions. And so it, it creates, I guess, a, an inherently tense situation. So what I would like to see is, is maybe us look at exploring a funding mechanism that would put the school board in, in the driver's seat of making those kind of decisions for themselves, of being able to determine revenue stream and needs. Obviously, it would have to be in, in some level in cooperation with the county board. My plan, which is something that has been done in, in other counties, Union County comes to mind initially, would be if we could designate a portion of our property tax as being dedicated to the school system. And we'd have to figure out what exactly that amount would be. But that would be a, a portion of the property tax that would go to you and it would be identified in terms of a, you know, whether it's 38 cents per $100 of value that belongs to, to the board or some, some number reflective of how the funding has been in the past. And then you have that rate to work with. And just like we go through year to year and have to decide what we're going to do with our now 70 and a half cents, you know, that would then be broken out between the two boards. And you guys would, would make that decision looking at the, the funding needs on the ground for you. And we'd have to talk about, you know, what hap, what would happen if you guys, as a, a board decided that that rate would need to change on your end and the mechanism for allowing that. But I, I think it does make sense to have a, a group of us working together on maybe exploring some ideas like that. It sounds like from what Mr. Cotton was saying, we may need a working group of, of some kind anyway, based on HB 1031. And so I think it does make sense for us to explore some ideas along that line.
As I understand it earlier, 55% of your current revenue tax base is going to the school district. Is that correct?
Fifty-two.
That's what Chairman Bry is.
Fifty-two is the right number.
52%. So if we're currently 52% of that, the, the Onslow County Schools, and we're all part of the county and we all come out of the same tax base and we all serve the same citizens. The school district is the only entity in the county that grows as large as it does right now. The county offices to serve the county government, with the exception of, of a, a couple of the offices, are fairly steady with the number of people they have and the services that they provide. And those services go up as the population goes up. But they're not exponentially going up as high or as quickly as we are in the school system. We're building constantly, having to build schools. And it's forecasted to do that for the next 10 years. So whatever program we come up with, we'd have to have enough flexibility that we would have sufficient funding to fund the needs of the school district. And we're currently doing that through a funding formula mechanism. That's a process we're already utilizing. It was a quick and simple method. I was vocal when, it was a unilateral decision to discontinue that. I think that we should have sat down as boards and had this discussion that we're having today prior to making that decision. I think it would have been more effective. But I think we need to work together. I, I agree that maybe a working group will be able to do this. But for whatever that we decide, whatever method that we go forward with it, we have to be able to understand we're a growing school district. Our needs are outpacing the revenue sources that we've got. And I understand that. I understand why Mr. Bennett and some other board members did not like the funding formula because it did constantly create a additional revenue source that the school district got every year based on additional students. We had this discussion in our special board meeting last week. It's currently going to be studied. And I think this study of, of what our staff is doing with that, I think could come to the county in a format that would enhance the discussions that we have with regards to that. I think it's important that we build a trust between the two county boards. The school district serves your children as well as our children. It's, it's not, it's not against him, against her, or her against him, or him against him. We're all working here for the same purposes. And we have a limited amount of money and a limited amount of ability to raise additional revenue based on our tax base. And I understand that. But I think that we need to delve into this a little deeper into why it is that we're setting this table today.
That growth that we're talking about, that three or 400 students a year, I think it manifests itself more in capital areas like you talked about than it does operational. The cost of educating a kid doesn't go up by $3 million just because you have 300 more students.
I agree fully.
I, I would like to know what the true cost is of those 300 students. If we could measure that, I don't know if it can truly be measured subjectively, you know, that we all, we would like to have more. And so the situation is, is that I think it's, it's a capital, more on that side than it is operational.
And I agree fully with that concept because when we go back and we look and we analyze the damages that we had during Hurricane Florence, and we go back and we have the roof reports that show us when these facilities should have had new roofs versus those that got damaged in the hurricane. And there's a direct correlation to the amount of damages that we had. A large portion of that $18 million could have been attributed to roof leaks. A lot of that could have been alleviated, in my opinion, had we been able to have a robust deferred maintenance program that addressed the roofing issues itself. $3 million a year to a deferred maintenance program is insufficient when you have 11 million a year need. And that's something we need to look at. And we need to be able to interface those. If it means that we have a set amount of tax base and only the school district can get 52% of that, well, maybe 52%, maybe we have to look at maybe 50% going to, to the, the needs of the schools and 2% going to rebuilding or resurfacing or putting new roofs on. Maybe we need to look at the mix there. Because I think that we will never get out of the hole in deferred maintenance if you've got $11 million accruing every year and you're only putting $3 million in. Look at it as your bank account. If we were fortunate enough to have $11 million in debt and $3 million in income, you're never going to get out of the hole. And that's the way we are. We have more surface, more heated surface in the school district than any other organization in the county, excepting maybe the, the federal government.
Does the school board have discretion on maintenance and operation money or capital improvement money?
We, we have the $3 million, but the $3 million is insufficient to even cover the roofing, let alone all of those things that we have to patch and repair on a yearly basis.
If I may, a couple of thoughts. And I realize in a setting with so many minds eager to give information, you sometimes just have to jump in. So let me give you a few thoughts. First of all, about the environment. I, I believe the environment that we find ourselves in is fairly unique in North Carolina. We have, if not the youngest median age population in North Carolina, then really, really close to it. It used to be the youngest. And those young families do have lots of kids. So although we have 100 counties, we're, we're fairly blessed with, with children that we have to put in school. When, when I sit in a different seat, I always remember the amount of discretion that county commissioners have over your budget, the things that you must fund, the things that are mandated by law, mandated by law but discretionary in level of funding like the sheriff's office, but, but are driven by population instead. And then the purely discretionary things that you might, might choose to do for quality of life reasons like the Onslow County Museum. What I've been surprised at going through this initial school board training is, is the amount of inflexibility that's also applied to, to North Carolina Boards of Education. The, the things that are prescribed by ratios of student to teacher and, and the courses that you will teach and the ways you'll teach them and the curriculum and the other things that you have to have. So the level of discretion is, is much less than I otherwise would have imagined. It is more certainly in some areas like maintenance or where you have something not as controlled by the state. But when you have, once again, 3.8 million heated square feet, there's been this annual prioritization and they've been trying to Band-Aid a lot of things, as is evidenced by a roofing situation. The, the thing that kind of worries me the most about any proposal is that we've lost four months. This meeting was supposed to have happened in September. We lost October, November, December, and, and you might as well say January. And I would hazard a guess, Mr. Cotton, that you may have thought about your 2019, 2020 budget. So, or have you? Have you had any meetings at all, Mr. Manager?
Absolutely.
He has. And I would imagine, or certainly hope, Mr. Holloman, that you've been given instruction, giving instruction to our principals and to our working groups in the school system. I know in my own daytime job, we're right in the thick of it. So, so we are building budgets now. And I'm not certain, we may have more, we, I'm certain would have more success than, than perhaps the federal government at times. But I'm, I'm not certain how much longer we would need to develop that budget for this fiscal year. So we may need to, to try to find a way to do this in two steps. Uh, so we may need to, to try to find a way to do this in two steps. Maybe, maybe the first step, how do we get through the budget that we're facing right now and, and give ourselves a little time to, to work things. A, a very wise person told me a long time ago, Jeff, there are very few things that have to be decided right this instant. And, uh, and I have tried to take that to heart and, and apply a fair amount of common sense and, and caution as we move forward. I do think that we can find some way, um, but, but also I'm not certain, uh, how we, how we are going to go about doing it, knowing the county's need to fund a, a myriad number of departments and not knowing right this second what the growth in the tax base is, uh, the percentage growth in the tax base and what revenue that yields. That'd be an interesting number. Um, and, and of course, what does it really cost per child? You certainly have fixed cost, uh, electricity for our facilities and more kids that come in. Some of them can fit in those existing facilities, uh, but for every 30 students, depending on where they're sitting, that might be another teacher or some more supplies. There's a lot of work to be done. Thank you.
Well, sales tax, uh, revenue, we've had some initial reports on that and, uh, that's a moving target. Uh, property tax, we had over $500 million in damage to structures and we don't know who has, we knew who was applied, but we hadn't done inspection yet to find out what kind of, uh, tax base we've lost with that. Uh, it could be considerable on property tax. We could've lost a lot of, uh, tax value and that's people that would normally pay taxes on $200,000 home might be paying taxes on $20,000 piece of property. So we don't know what that number is yet. It's, everything is really up in the air. And I, I do agree that we, you know, we're way behind on, uh, this meeting and the budget, uh, getting started because we just don't have the numbers. It's hard to, it's hard to, uh, come up with a budget when you don't have a revenue, solid revenue stream or, uh, just like, um, Steve and Jeff were talking, you don't have a solid s, uh, number on the amount of damage yet. Could be more, could be less. I hope it's, uh, goes down from, uh, 50 million to 18 million on the, uh, on the, I hope all the other numbers go down to the same amount. Maybe, maybe we can get by with you guys owing us some money.
But Jack, one thing to point out. The Board of Education that's sitting in this room with the Board of County Commissioners has never done a Board of Education budget. This configuration of Board of Education. So we, we have work ahead of us, uh, and I believe that, that brings new perspective to the process. So deciding today is, is a bit premature.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cotton and Chairman Thomas, the Board of Education budget, there's a deadline for it to come to the, the Board of Commissioners. What's that, that date?
Uh, May 15th.
May 15th. So we're just three and a half, four months out. So are we in a position that we're not going to come up with a, in my opinion, we're not going to come up with a funding formula that we're going to put together and deem it our funding formula for now till whenever? Um, are we in a position that maybe we need to, to begin laying the groundwork for a formula that can go into place after a lot of work with both boards and staffs to where we're looking at the 2021 school year? And right now, we need to sit down and come up with a, a formula or a, a, a number that we can get us through 1920 and then come back in the next cycle with a, a solid funding formula, whether it's, um, Mr. Shanahan, some thoughts and ideas on there. I've talked to some superintendents around the state with some things that they do there and then our Board of Education, I think, probably has some ideas and thoughts that they would want to look at. I don't want us to rush into something over the next three months and it not be what the schools need, not what the citizens of Onzeal County need, but some time that we can put into a solid manner of, of funding the schools and meeting their needs at the same time that the citizens are saying that's, that's a pretty good plan. And I don't know what that number would be now, but I don't know if we're in that position. I don't want to, uh, run and dive off at the end of the pier and not know how deep the water is right now, but, uh, to set up 1920 and then begin preparing for the long term in the 2021 year.
As we had, uh, talked about it during the, um, the Board of Education workshop and we, we came to a consensus that at some point, I should say, at the end of the day, what we've determined, uh, at the Board of Education or Onzeal County Schools is that our particular needs are need-driven and not income dri, income-driven. Uh, my recommendation would be that if we're coming up with these methodologies, that we run two concurrent columns, one based on expected revenue and the other based on specific needs. And then at that point, in some way overlap them to come up with a happy medium as to what's doable. It's the only way. School system, it's the nature of the system. It is totally need-driven because the needs are so highly flexible, I should say, shifting.
Mr. Williams, I, I appreciate that and it's kind of what we've talked about. Our board, this configuration of a Board of Education has, has not sat down and, and gone through requests from the, the very lowest level up to the Board of Education, which would result in what this elected body has, has determined are the needs of the school system. But at the same time, uh, if, you know, if you, if you move two seats down, you kind of wonder, well, what's the maximum that's going to be happening?
Right.
Uh, I think it's helpful if, if the county knows that there's some not to exceed amount. Um, so that you have, you have our, us doing our diligence as required by statute, that we will be putting together a budget. I mean, it's, that's not contingent on anybody else anywhere. We are, we will put together a budget and in the end, uh, it'll be one that, that has to pass and be submitted by May 15th to the county. But then, then working on the budget now, what is the county to expect when that day comes?
Well, and I think it would make sense, I think it, it makes sense what we're talking about as far as a, a, a two-step process. One, figuring out what are we going to do next year through this budget cycle and then two, long-term, uh, what are we going to do? And, and I think you're right, both, both boards do need to have some understanding soon, I mean, sooner rather than later of, of what this budget cycle is, is going to look like for planning purposes. Um, and it, it seems to me like, um, while you guys are, are doing, I like that you said not to exceed, while you guys are doing your due dil, due diligence on the budgeting side, you know, maybe we can look at this HB 1031, uh, amount, uh, a, as sort of that not to exceed amount for next year.
My concern with, uh, HB 1031 is a couple of issues. Number one, you're starting out with the end in mind, otherwise worst-case scenario. If we can't work this out between the two boards, HB 1031 kicks in after mediation and basically says, here's the formula, this is what you're going to get. And if you can't get together in three years, then the county gets penalized for that process. I would prefer that we have, uh, some honest discussions with regards to our needs and that we take ownership as a county for all of the problems that the school district has with regards to both funding our current local expense budget and our maintenance issues. And I think we have to work together to do that. I think as a board or as boards, we can come up with something to do that. I, I have enough faith that there's enough brain power sitting at this table that we can come up with something that will work and that will work for the citizens of Onzeal County. But I think we all have to take ownership of the fact that we have 38 facilities out there that have a lot of deferred maintenance. That's where I think, had we had this foresight 10 years ago and had addressed the problem back then, we wouldn't be looking at 40 to 50 million dollars worth of damages in a hurricane because we would've already mediated some of that problem. So we need to look forward on this. We can't go back in history and change what happened, but we can change what we do in the future.
Well, that's, I'd just like to point out though, that the state funded formula, we may not, we may have a better option, which is what, uh, Mr. Shanahan said. It's the capital expense that we are going to have to address in a different way unless that changes as well on the state level. And I know that, uh, Jeff Holloman does sit on a work group, uh, studying that right now. I, I liked what, uh, Mr. Foster said. I think that it brings us all to the table and we can look for, um, the future instead of waiting. I mean, you know, we've got to understand our needs are going to be immediate in the next six months. I mean, August is here, gonna be here before we know it. So we need to know what we're going to be able to, um, accomplish in funding before we get to May, really. And I have no objection to, uh, I think it's a great idea to have staff, uh, work with several board members on, on each side, uh, maybe not together, but independently and bring those things back to the table. I think it's a great idea, uh, sometimes having fresh eyes and we've got some new people. Might bring, bring us a full circle.
Well, we have, uh, Commissioner Foster and, uh, Commissioner Price as, you know, educators and being a principal and now they're board members, so, and then we have Mr. Shanahan that has an idea, so he's fresh off the press. So maybe, uh, maybe those three can work with staff and work with some, the staff of the school board too, to, to get a better understanding and bring it back to the board if, if, if it's the pleasure of you guys to do that.
Absolutely.
I have two, um, board members who are not here today and I'd like to share the conversation we've had with them and then we will move forward with the same, um, operation with the staff and.
Okay.
Board members.
Just for clarity, um, I've read House Bill 1031 and the formula set forth does, does not contemplate you having all the data by July 1.
That's right.
So I, I don't believe, and, and I don't, I did not take it that it was anyone's intention that we default to the text of, of that session law, formerly House Bill 1031. I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to say upfront, we'll end up it, we'll end up utilizing that state mechanism. But, but if, if we're putting together a budget, am I hearing this correctly? We, we put together a budget as is our responsibility. And, and we know that, you know, we know the calculations that 1031 would result in approximately, that we should just be mindful of that as, as we move forward. But no matter what it is, the needs are the needs and that we would present that, um, you know, by May 15th to the county. Is that what I'm hearing?
And there's nothing that says we can't revisit the old formula.
Absolutely.
We have two new members here. We could revisit the old formula. And like I think you said while ago, Foster, that we might be able to get by with 1920 and then 2021 have something in place. I mean, it's, it can be revisited. I don't know if the other commissioners know that.
Now, now what I'm taking away is that with the discussion is that there may be options that would change that funded formula from the state. Isn't that what you're suggesting, Will?
Right, well, I think, I, I was suggesting that, that long-term, I mean, I, I don't think it could be necessarily put in place for, for this budget cycle, but.
I don't either.
But long-term, uh, that, that we identify a, a, a rate, break down the actual property tax rate into two components and dedicate one of those to the, the school board, which would have, of course, be, uh, very different than HB 1031 because then you would look every year as we collected property taxes, the school board would get paid according to their portion of the rate. Um, and, and so, yeah, it would, it would look, I think, entirely different than, than 1031 over.
Pam, I agree with you. I, I'd heard the same thing. And, and I listened to what you had to say, Bob, and I agree with you on, on almost everything you said in terms of what direction your ideologies are on this. We need to sit together, we need to sit together, soon, get together and work together, whether it be board members of the Board of Education and the commissioners and with the, the, uh, the staff as well, to come up with some type of idea because like you, I believe there's enough, there's enough brains here or mental intelligence here that we can come up with a better solution or a solution that we both can agree upon and move forward. Um, you know, we already know that the problems exist. We already know that we, we have to address it now. So we can talk all day long about how we need to address the situation, but we need to take a course of action and move and start moving now. So I, and like, yeah, I, I did hear what you heard. I got the same interpretation. And quite frankly, I like what you suggested, Bill. I read that email three or four times and, um, I was highly impressed.
I think we, um, have pretty much got guidelines set out for the manager and staff and, um, we have another meeting scheduled in just a few minutes, so, um, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, ask for a adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I'd like for a motion to, a motion to adjourn the Board of Education.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting, guys.